All right, seven o'clock. Top of the world planning board meetings, September 20th, 2018. So we're gonna actually instead, before we do the minutes, we're gonna move down to the action item. Appointment of chairman and vice chairman. Because currently my term is expired, so we need to establish a chair. I'm not sure if that's term expired as well. So we need to take care of that first before we do this. You need a motion? No, no, actually, I'm up before we do that. Myself, you know, I've been doing this for a year and, you know, I don't really think I'm qualified to do it. You know, having good intentions and be able to run a meeting is one thing. Not having an agenda, but you need to have, you know, working knowledge. You need to have the time to do the schooling that's necessary for the changes that are coming up. And with my job schedule, I work six days a week. And I really, I don't have the time to put into it that's really needed. So I feel like I'm doing an injustice by doing this. And by continuing to do what I feel like I'm just enabling it to continue on by not having someone here. This past week, there was an error on sending out notices. You know, they should have been sent out, you know, certified, and they were not. So the appointments that were scheduled for tonight have to be rescheduled because there wasn't, they were sent out in time, but there was, without sending it certified mail, there was no proof that it was sent out. You know, having the stamp on the town's meter is not enough for it to be proof. And what, you know, Leanne made a point today that's valid is that there's really no one double checking her. And, you know, I don't know if she should be, you know, the end of the line as far as, you know, being to know all of all. You know, I really think there's, you know, there has to be someone with the knowledge to be able to double check that. And, you know, I just don't, you know, I don't have the knowledge. And the biggest thing is I don't mind going to do schooling to get the knowledge. I just don't have the time to do it. But we still need a chair and we need a vice chair. And unfortunately, you know, two of the people here, you can't be here. So that's, you know, the dilemma. So with that said.
Are you staring at Matt?
No, I understand. This is in anyone's, you know, anyone's comments, I guess, on it.
Let's wait for the tone of his nomination.
Oh, okay. I know.
Well, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that you've been doing a good job for the past year.
Even though you don't think you're qualified, we have to believe that you are qualified. You have a years' experience. Plus, you've been on the planning board for how long before that? I haven't, but I mean, you know, being on the board and going through the motions. And when, you know, I guess it's the, you know, being educated and being updated. And there's just many classes there to be had, to be go to. You know, and it just, I don't have, working six days, I don't have the time to get to them. So I mean, I don't, you know, you might think, you know, Leanne is correct. I mean, I should have caught that, you know, there weren't, you know, went out certified. So I don't, you know, totally blame her for, you know, her misunderstanding the RSA that changed, the language.
Stuff happens, can't be responsible for everything.
Right. Well, no, it isn't just that. I mean, it's been, you know, a year of, you know, stumbling through, you know, through the meetings. But I don't know, I don't know if, you know, I can continue to do it for a little bit longer until we need more people on the board. I mean, there's definitely people in town that, you know, have had prior experience and all that, that maybe we can top them into doing that and having the time to go into the schooling and stuff, so.
Well, would you consider taking it under that basis? That we'll continue to look for somebody, but until then, you'll stand in as the chair?
I guess we're gonna need to aggressively be looking.
Yeah. Well, we'll come up with some ideas, see if we can get new members on the board that would be in your eyes qualified to be chairman. Matt, you want to be vice chairman for a year?
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion that John's chairman until we find somebody who can take his place and that back as vice chair.
I second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of the minutes, August 16th. I've gone through mine and see again anything. The emotion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
So is anyone here for the scheduled appointments? The Scott and Christine Bailey, the Clark House Family Trust, Land's End Inc., Robert and Jennifer Brennan?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
It's Lane's End, by the way, not Leansen.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So when was the rescheduling dates? I believe, did you try, did you email or? Oh, you confirmed all, okay.
They may not all know what happened, so anyone you should explain.
Okay, so basically, the notices for the abutters were mailed out on a, you know, you, Leanne came in on a Sunday. Did all the envelopes, stamped it through the machine on a Sunday, put them in the mailbox on our way, on our way home. Just because they were sent out 10 days prior, you have to go prove that you sent them out when they're stamped. And that's why, you know, you have to do certified mail because there's the proof that it was actually sent out on that date rather than just a stamp, you know, on the meter. Even the town hall's meter doesn't prove they went in the mailbox. So because of that, you know, legally, you can't prove that they were sent out, you know, 10 days in advance. You don't have to receive the letter 10 days in advance. It just has to be sent, proven to be sent out 10 days in advance. So you might not receive it till the day before, but you have to, it has to be proven that it was sent out 10 days in advance. Yes?
I'd like to comment on that. It's not appropriate to mail it on Sunday. The post office is closed on Sunday. So it should have been mailed on Saturday and postmarked Saturday and delivered in some form of a verification from the post office or certified mail.
Right.
Where the, where the post office would stamp the date that it was mailed.
Right.
They have to go 10 days prior to the meeting, not counting the day of the meeting or the day of the posting.
Right.
And Sunday doesn't count to start with because the post office is closed. So it needs to be on the Saturday is the deadline to get it out for a Thursday meeting.
Right.
Because I know you're thinking about October 4th. So going forward, that would have, the new ones would have to go out this Saturday, not this Sunday.
Right. Yep, and they will be going out, you know, certified mail.
Well, they should be because that's what's in the reg.
Well, the language changed and that's.
In the state law, allowed verified.
Right, but there isn't less.
But your regs have not changed, they still call for certified.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, the orders have been rescheduled. I guess we'll bring up to the public, if there's any other questions or comments.
I hate to be, you know, the bad person here, but this is important stuff.
Very true.
It's really important. It costs a lot of people, a lot of money to have these errors. This is my third application for David Lat. The first one, I don't know, five or six years ago, didn't go certified mail. Invalid hearing, had to do it over again. And this application that I'm on tonight, when I came the first time on it, noticed public hearing, there was no quorum here. We did manage to have some discussion with the abutter and the board. And it's taken all this time to get all the issues addressed, and now we're back.
And here we are again.
And here we are again with an invalid hearing. It's crazy, people get sued over this. And if there's a suit happening here, it's going against you guys and the town. Because it's your responsibility, every one of you, to pay attention to these kind of details.
Yeah.
You can't just show up for the meeting. You guys all need schooling, not just the chairman. All of you should be going to the fall classes that the municipal association offers every year.
Yeah.
You have to, you cannot possibly figure this out on your own. Especially with the small amount of applications that you've been handling because the economy's been down.
Right.
Start getting developments in here, and you're gonna start getting stuff. Like, like you have on one of your hearings that was scheduled for tonight, condominium stuff.
Right.
That's a whole nother animal. There's a lot of different rules for that.
Yeah.
So.
Would you think you, I was thinking about you today. Because when I first came on this, you were here, you know, with Rick. And I don't know if you would have, you know, the time to, you know, to go come back on the board. Because you have, you know, the expertise, you know.
Well, we had a lot of people on the board with land expertise. We had surveyors and engineers and.
Yeah, I know, it was there.
There was a wide variety of expertise.
Yeah.
But we still all went to all the training.
Right.
And we still learned while we were at it because of the stuff that kept coming at us. It was in the late eighties, you know. Into late eighties, everything was booming, it was crazy time, so.
We never had our meetings here. Every meeting was big enough to have at the townhouse.
Right, they were all up there, yeah. It was ridiculous, so.
But we have to give it some thought.
You know, I would give it some thought and I'd be willing to help. I'm not sure I'd be ready to devote the time for a regular position, but I'm sure I could do something that might help.
Right. Anyone else?
John McGurder?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear from Bill what the selectmen feel, maybe not tonight, but what you folks think you could do to potentially help with support to kinda get some checks and balances in place even from an administrative perspective. Because I've only been at this a few days and it's a little bit frustrating, so. At least early in, I'm seeing that maybe there's some potential for additional support, especially since nobody's at this full time, other than Jack who has another full time job.
Great. I mean, some, you know, towns, you know, they, you know, town planners.
I'm not, I'm just.
Right, I know.
Just curious about the selectmen. I don't think the select, this situation lies, not just because I have a personal stake in the outcome of it, but this is serious stuff.
It's like.
Very serious.
There's quite a few of us impacted by what appears to be maybe some administrative errors. And I, I guess I challenge the selectmen to step up and see what can be done to fix it.
Right, but I mean, and also, you know, for administrative, I think there should be someone that can double check her as well. You know, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, I don't think it's about the person at this, it seems like a process issue.
Right, but in everything, you need to have checks and balances. And, you know, there isn't, there isn't that there. You know, we just have the, you know, the going motion of it, but, but yeah, the checks and balances are definitely needed, for sure.
So anyway, Bill, you can, I don't know what you should say now. You might still get some feedback from the others.
Yeah, I agree. It's an issue that we need to take some issue with. Okay.
I'm sorry, I've got something too. Just state your name so Leanne can lay it down for the call.
My question is, is it, is a problem, is the problem as usual, like any committees now, that people don't want to come onto committees? I spent five years on this planning board and was chairman back in the seventies. And because we had some very dedicated seniors that were very knowledgeable on the board. And it went through from Charlie Whitten and many I can name off that were on the board. Is it the problem, or is it just getting people to come out and do it? Or what is the major problem?
That's it, it's, you know, it's finding people to have the time, you know, not just the willingness. And for me, you know, I've done this stuff, you know, since, I don't know, 2007. Not just the willingness to help, but you need to have the willingness, you need to have the time available to be educated. Because whatever line of business you're in, this is a whole different thing. A lot of it is, is, a great deal of it is checklist, common sense, and, you know, the laws and the rules are what they are. So some of it, it's fairly, it isn't that bad. It's when things are constantly changing.
This is the problem.
And that's the problem, you know. So I know what I have and what I know, but once things change and if I don't have the time.
To keep abreast.
To keep abreast of what's, what's changing, then I'm doing an inadequate job. And not just in this or, in any line of life or business. You know, and just for my, my time, you know, I work six days a week and I only have Sundays. And, you know, not, there isn't much open for education. I mean, there's some online, I'm sure I could do. But the classes and stuff like that, which would be much beneficial, which have always been, you know, the town is willing to pay. We have money in our budget for, you know, education. It's just having the time, you know. So where, you know, people that, you know, you know, are retired, that have, you know, some time on their hands and the willingness to help is really what is really needed. I believe. Yes, sir.
Jim Taylor, just on that, I don't need to change the subject, but we came up here because we're abutters at Bobal Lang, and I believe it was some proposal. And could you just tell me what the, what the issue would be? It looks like it's gonna be put off, right?
That would be Bailey, correct?
I'm sorry?
Across the street at Bailey.
Okay.
There's nothing at Bobal Lang, so I'm sure it's Bailey on 405 Governor Whitworth.
No, I think we're gonna notice that we're abutters, so.
You're an abutter, correct.
It's a Bailey project, correct?
Yeah, it was regarding Bailey.
Is that gonna be discussed tonight?
No.
No, rescheduled. To October 4th.
Okay.
Do you give any information?
Could you tell me just what it is, what it is?
Give us some information?
Yeah, right.
I don't think we even have the, I don't even have the applications because.
Home market basis.
We have them here.
Chuck knows.
It's a site plan review. He wants to run a business on his home.
Okay.
And it's in the neighborhood business district. He just, because of stuff, he's not gonna be outside. It's gonna have parking area for him, something like that, if that's what he wants to do.
Oh, okay. And what kind of building is it?
He does excavation.
Yeah, okay, I thought I would have your question, yeah, okay.
And engineering.
Right.
That seems pretty benign.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice seeing all of you. So these are all being postponed until October 4th?
They all have to be because Lane's End, there was, there was.
Oh, yeah. Lane's End is gonna be out October 18th.
Okay, thank you. And we will get certified notice of that?
You will. You will.
I.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have a concern, for instance, like this person who just left, you know, they got notice of something happening on an abutting property.
Right.
Yet because staff in, for your office works part time, and those of us get this notice, we wanna see what the application is before the hearing happens.
That's right.
Not have it be accepted here tonight and have to find out and then be ready to testify the same night on it. I just don't think that's good due process. And that bothered me, and I was calling three different people to get information earlier this week so that I could, you know, be informed for this hearing. So I just would ask you to keep that all in mind also. It's like, how does this information, you know, if the planning clerk is not here and, you know, who in town hall can give that information out?
Right.
And make that part of the notice that we get? Where can we get the information?
Yeah, because what is, what is on the letters that get sent out?
Well, the town offices, they have, they have scheduled business hours and the applications are public record and available to all public at all times of the business hours. So feel free to come into the town hall and ask any one of the staff that works here to review the file. Mr. McGurder did that a couple of days ago and he reviewed it with Karen.
Excuse me, John, yes, you, you done?
Yeah, I'm just letting her know that they're here and available. I don't take the files home. Tell me that they're readily available.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're correct, I did get to review the file. But Jack, Jack and I had a tentative time, he wasn't able to make it. But Karen had to go through Jack to get permission, I guess, to allow me to look at the stuff, which I appreciate. But I think Jill's point, and I experienced it, is the staff, Karen isn't set up, nor does she know what's going on enough, other than, you know, she got direction from Jack and it worked out. But they're not, they're not ready for a line of us to come in here and look at this stuff. You know, unless it's laid out and sent us into the room and have at it, which isn't really appropriate. I made sure that she gave me what Jack said I could take a peek at and she was very polite and set me up in here. But it's not, it's not like there's a process set up for people to just come in and look at this stuff, so.
Look, I know when you called, you wanted to look at it all, you can look at it all, you just can't take what's there.
Right.
Even though there's six or eight copies, we require six or eight copies. You can't take.
But I wasn't gonna go, go walking in where I knew what was.
Right, right, I know. I just didn't make them, sorry.
I'm not, no, no, you and I, we just had a tentative deal and it worked out, but there's no process set up.
One second, so the process as well, it isn't just, you know, we have a meeting, it gets approved or denied. That isn't necessarily how it works. When we have a meeting, we have to take, the application has to be deemed complete. And a lot of times, something is missing, you know, or something has to be, you know, so that a lot of times, it's not a, you know, one meeting, you know, thing that happens. That, you know, that happens quite often.
But if it was, in two days, then the hearing was going to be here and then the letter said you could have voted, all of that today, without us knowing.
Right, it's that, right, because sometimes it does happen. You know, some simple, easy things, you know, happen, you know. But, you know, a lot of it is going through the checklist and, you know, because basically, the board can do only what the, you know, the laws say we can do. We don't have, there isn't, other than adding a bush or a shrub or a fence or something like that to, to an application. You know, the laws are the laws, and there isn't any variance really, you know, from that. But, but, you know, sometimes things do, you know, simple things do go through, you know, quickly. I'm sorry, you had a question?
Jen Sanders. And I came twice to find out what this was all about. And the clerks weren't able to, whoever needed to be here wasn't here. And, you know, I mean, they were very sympathetic and nice and all that, but this is.
It's still getting the information, you know.
Like you, I came here just to even find out, you know, look at a map and see what part of my property was part, because this is. It just says nothing about.
It's a site plan review.
Yeah, and it talks, it talks about a conservation, preservation, agricultural, excuse me, preservation restriction. And to me, I'm thinking, well, there's a, there's some sort of conservation issue, some sort of, my property is up against land trusts or, I mean, that's what, to me, this was.
Right.
And now I'm finding out that it's, it's a development, you know, for homes and things like that. So I, it just, it puts, you know, a little bit of anxiety on us that.
Right, so you notice could have some information on it. It's a three lot subdivision or, you know, it's a site plan review for a parking lot.
Yeah.
A basic.
Change of view.
Something.
Right.
Yeah, it does say three lot subdivision, but it also has that.
Yeah, the line there about conservation.
And preservation, I mean, is it, is it. Yeah.
I don't know, did they, did they ever send out, you know, the copy of the application?
No, no.
No?
We're not required by law to do that.
Guess what?
We are not required by law to do that. We're required to send another copy of the abutters at the date and time.
I was gonna say, I just have an engineering firm, you know, professionally prepared, for some permitting at home properties. And, you know, they sent me a copy of the letter that they sent to the abutters, which in this case was Shoreline, so that the court might have a direction. And it was a brief description of the property like that, and that was it. And it said, you know, copies are available at DES headquarters at the town hall. But I do agree that you should be able to access that file much more easily. It should be.
Anytime that town hall is open, we should be able to.
So we need to put together better procedures for them to be available. They are here, they're public records. It's just that the staff that works here every day needs to have a way to get to them, understand what's there. So when somebody comes in, they can pull it out and take a look at it right out on the counter. And that's.
What it just.
Again, I think, as Sue said earlier, we haven't had much of this in a long time. So it's, it's great to have a flurry of activity and we just have to be able to.
Be prepared for it.
To, right, to, to, Leanne does a good job of putting all the paperwork together, making sure that the packages are there. But she's not here all the time, nor should she be here all the time. It's just a matter of having, having where they're accessible, staff that's here and knows where they are. And can make them available to anybody that comes in.
Right, and all these years too, we've also always had, you know, a crutch. You were, you know, Jack is on the board and Jack is here, you know, a great deal of the time. So I'm sure, you know, he's had to.
But there's no reason that, that somebody should have to wait for Jack to be here.
Right.
To, to look at the, at the records.
Years ago as well, Jackie was secretary, I think it's only in the board that Jackie was there.
Sure.
Quite a bit and knew where that, you know, was. So that probably helped the situation in the past.
So would it be, did they send a copy of the application along with the abutter letter?
I'm sorry?
Would it be appropriate to send a copy of the application along with the abutter letter?
Be a paper mill.
That would be a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot and costly.
Yeah, I totally realize it would be.
It's scary, they'll post it up on the web. That would be bad.
The key is to have, not everybody's gonna wanna go through it, but, you know, if anybody who's interested should be able to get to it. Just like anybody comes in and talks to somebody in the office and needs to look at, at the file on the property.
That's cool. That should be available.
Available, so it can be, can be pulled out, and they can go through it. And if they have any questions and, you know, if the counter doesn't know the answer to questions, there's a way to get at least further the process. So they can, when we have the hearing, be well versed and ready to address the situation.
Yeah.
Would it all be practical to perhaps stand in and put it up on the town question? For the duration?
Maybe just the application, not all the supporting documents.
Oh, did you know that, sorry?
Definitely.
Well, I think the first step would be to make it available to the town office. So that people, when they get the abutter letter, they could come in and review the file for their own satisfaction. Well, I think the first step would be to make it available to the town office, so that people like, when they get the above letter, they could come in and review the file for their own satisfaction.
That would be the first step, I think at this point, I think that if you say, hey, we're gonna load it to the website, you're setting yourself up for it.
Yeah.
I think that just making sure it's available, you know, during business hours, maybe the RSA.
Well, the other, excuse me, the other thing is a lot of us work too, so maybe. Maybe just stand in that, from what I saw, there's a a basic application, then it has a form that might show all the attachments, but just. Just that first, you know, that application, maybe get that posted up and maybe a lot of us would go away, you know, if we get to see that call, it's that, you know.
I would like to add, Bob, just so that everyone is aware. It specifically says on the planning board website that I do not hold office hours, but I am available upon, basically upon request for meetings. And I've even included my cellphone on that website. So, I mean, I can meet anybody, night, weekends, days, I don't get the calls, people don't call me to ask to meet. And the and the files for a pending application that is upcoming is always on my desk, always, so. I mean, I'm all for having policy in place, I just hope that people understand the stuff is here and has been always here. And I have always made myself accessible by giving my personal cellphone, not work, it's a personal cellphone to be made available.
Yeah, I didn't know.
So that's an option too.
It is a possibility.
I I didn't know that, but quite frankly, I don't, it doesn't seem reasonable to have you have to be available if someone's been.
But I don't hold office hours and I felt that was the fairest thing to do, was a law for that.
Yeah. But anyway, just, two of us have just suggested maybe a scan of a PDF, maybe not the whole file, but maybe just the application. I mean, you, from my observation, you're just buried in in paperwork, you know, printing things and sending them out and all that stuff. So I don't, I don't know, you know, how you do it, all that stuff, but the application I looked at was four or five pages and then there's attachments. But maybe just that application, and then if it piques someone's interest, maybe, you know, come in and look at it, you know, gee, I can't get in during the day. Whatever, make some arrangements, but I would, I would almost bet that if it's, if that, just that application is available scanned in and PDF or whatever. That there might not be a line here, you know, wondering what's wrong.
Cuts down the numbers.
I don't, it's, but again, I'm gonna toss it back over the selectmen's way, they're the ones that can make things happen, so.
Yes.
Um Jill Cromwell again, Leanne, I think that's commendable that you put your cellphone on the website, but when I called and left a message on town office planning board phone through the. System you get when you call town hall and it says leave a message, it did not give information of what your cellphone number would be and that you would be available. Um so maybe that would be something you wanna put on your phone message here at town hall, if that's the way you wanna go, but I think, you know, it's probably more sensible to have. Anybody be able to have, you know, know how to approach, show us the information so that you don't have to come in every time somebody wants to see it. But I did call, read a message and, you know, it was more than a day before you called back.
Yeah, it was two days.
Yeah, so, you know, that would be helpful if you wanted to get called on your cellphone, I didn't know to look on the website.
Mister Chair.
Yep.
Max Ladue. It's not only a good idea that anybody should be able to come in and look at the application or or even, I mean, I wholeheartedly. Support the idea that you should be making things available on the website electronically so that anybody can go, you know, at midnight, you know. I mean, nobody's gonna call Leanne at midnight, but somebody can call up the application and look at the information. Um but it's not only a good idea that anybody should have, should be able to come in here during business hours and look at the application. It's a requirement of law. It's it's not a good idea that a few people came up with this in in this room. It's a, it's an absolute requirement. And I appreciate that the board tonight is, um, you know, you've acknowledged that made a mistake with a certified with letters and mistakes. Do happen and um I can respect when you say, hmm, you made a mistake, we gotta do it right. Um. This town has been very hostile to right to know, everybody here who's in a butter has a right to know what's happening. Everybody in town has a right to know, in fact, everyone in the world is, the people have a right to know. And that's a little weird because somebody from Czechoslovakia could call up and say, I wanna see whatever, but that's the law.
Yep.
Um so. You gotta make it happen. Because otherwise, there're gonna be lawsuits and you're gonna lose, and it's, it's not gonna be the kind of vindictive lawsuit that the selectman filed against me. When I asked for a document. And it's no different if I had come in to ask for a planning board uh document and you didn't wanna give it to me, so you sued me. That's what the selectman did to me and it wasted twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, we're not here to discuss law, uh we're here to.
Well, it's really important.
It's important, it's all the years, not not for.
And you people are on a board and it's really important and it's not something you can just brush aside. Right to know is the law, I think, I think you understand.
I understand it, but I I will agree though, if right now.
And I will.
Hold up, excuse me.
I will let it go.
Right now.
Right now.
Right to know is very, very important and, you know, technically we have five days or some ridiculous amount of time to get back and forth and I was trying to be as quick as I could.
Oh, that that was fine.
Yeah, um but right now, right now, it looks like you're grandstanding in front of your camera. So don't, don't, right to know is very important.
Who was grandstanding, this guy over here, who wasted twenty thousand dollars suing me and lost.
What, you're doing it again? This is the planning board.
Yeah.
There's nothing to do with, you know, he's on the planning board.
Get all the right to know or there're gonna be lawsuits against you personally and you're gonna be held responsible.
Information was here.
It wasn't provided.
It just. It was available. Did you get to see it when you came in, Jill? Did you see the information when you came in? Did Bob see it?
Yep, I got, I got it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying that the information is here, some of the people here might not known how to get it. And that's not right, but I wasn't here.
Me too.
You were good with it, you're good with it, this town is good with it.
Yes.
I would like to comment to to Matt really, I I think that it's not difficult to do the PDFs and get the plans online. Um the surveyors, they do all their work on the on the computer. They can zap out a PDF of whatever they generate and the rest of us, you know, I I can scan a certain size and convert it to a PDF. Send it over or I can go down to mailboxes or someplace.
Hey, I don't disagree that it's not difficult, um and I'm sure the surveyors, they probably, the only time they hit paper is probably when. You know, they print it out for the boards.
Right.
But it's in this town office with the staff in, they have such and so forth, it's one additional step. And I can see something going wrong and not getting posted and then, you know, people being upset because, you know, page three of the application gets scanned and such and so forth. And I can see it creating issues, so I would say the most important thing at this point would be to make sure the board is meeting the requirements of the RSA. Making sure the material is readily available at town hall and focusing on that, and I think certainly down the line, that's something that would happen. But I just see if that's something, in my opinion, you know, we went forward with, we're probably gonna miss something, something's not gonna get posted, there's gonna be an error. And we end up, we're exposing ourselves to liability or, um, you know, something just doesn't happen, so it shouldn't.
Mister Chair.
The town may not have the manpower to do that, like Matt says, it may.
But yeah, I think the question may, it's something that we we need to.
Right.
Look up, have to. But but the first thing to do is make sure that we have what we have here, that could, that's already here, available to somebody that comes in.
Right.
And it's it's physically available, it's just having all of this staff know where it is. And and how to deal with it and bring it out for for somebody that they wanna take a look at. Now, I think about if you'll answer questions uh for the most part, but the first step is. Given the opportunity to develop the questions and then they come to planning board with the questions.
Right, and again, you know, if Leanne, you know, is willing to, you know, give up her cellphone, which she is, you know, a lot of people are looking at the plans and if, you know. If Leanne doesn't mind, they can call Leanne and hang, you know, give them the gist of what the application is and that will take care of ninety percent of of the questions. You know, as well.
You know, I think the first steps, like you're talking about trying to get it available here, but we all have to realize the fact that generally, a good percentage of people that are butters. Aren't even available to come in here.
Right.
They're either seasonal, gone, when these are going on, or else they're just, they're seasonally only here for so many months, they need to have that knowledge. And just to get a notice like this, like mine or anybody else's, they can't come here, so the next step is to try to work towards a PDF or something. That people can get information, that will decrease your load and the number of people in here, they're coming in and trying to, what what's the problem, what are we doing? I think it really needs, it's a step that needs to be worked forward and, you know, the town needs to move that, all of us with the technology.
Right.
We need to move forward on this, you know, to keep up with the times and to make your load easier. So that you don't have to sit here and they're coming in and hammering you with questions when perhaps some of this could be handled well in advance and eliminate maybe fifty percent or more. Other people even coming in because, oh, that that's nothing I have an interest in, I get notices all the time for developments around my lands. And I look at, well, I know where the land is, I know about, but I I've lived in this town all my life.
Yeah.
But a person that just bought into this town or whether it has something show up across the street, like the two that were just here and left.
Yeah.
If they had more knowledge upfront, but that's where I think the the board and the town needs to work forward. And I know it's, it's a, it's a creeping situation, it needs to be done, but it needs to be done.
One of the problems is you have two opposing sides in this and you have one side who wants more goods and services, so this would be from the town. And then you have another side who wants to keep the taxes low.
Yeah.
So if we add this, you know, say we took every application and uploaded that and that, you know, which is not a super complicated thing to do, you know, people do it all the time. But you add more responsibility to the people in the hall, and then you have, someone says, hey, you know, we're overheard, now we need a town planner, now we need, you know, such and so forth. And yes, less of the things fall through the cracks and yes, you have more things, you know, available online, but now you have an added cost with it and you have another step, so to speak. So it's, it's great to think, hey, we're gonna do all these things, you know, cause I love it when I can get things online and I can go and look at an application online or, you know, things like that. But we have to remember that when we do something like that, we're gonna have a cost associated with it, so it's just something to keep in mind.
Good point.
You could, you could just have the applicant submit it by PDF.
That's great, required.
They could submit paper and they could submit PDF with the whole thing, so then if the burden is on the applicant to provide every page.
Well, yes, if you had a a system built that could do that, you can upload your application like they have for. There's, I can't think of one off top, I'm, I'm sure you guys know what I mean, that would be great, but I'm not sure that that system exists. Um and for people who aren't technically savvy, I mean, I imagine taking my father and saying, hey, I want you to upload this application onto the website.
No, no, the town office would have to upload it on the website, your father would have to take all the papers down to mailboxes and have them scan them onto a PDF. Onto a little zip drive and bring that in and hand it to them.
But they would still have to take the data and populate the website.
Right, but it would be all there.
True.
It would just.
Yeah, I don't know if 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 would that be a legal form of of an application, because it's not.
It would be a part of, you do the the traditional written.
Obviously, in addition to.
But in addition, you would submit a a zip drive with the whole thing on it that could be just dumped onto the web.
Yep.
Very quite, uh the selectmen have proposed, and I don't know if they've actually implemented it, hiring some part-time help to process ninety-one A requests. Uh I don't think the number of ninety-one A requests is, has been overwhelming lately or if they've even got to that point, but should they do such a thing. It's quite possible that that person might be able to handle some of this little bit of a load, for example, getting things onto a website or and that kind of thing too. Yes, indeed, there would be an expense, but there also would be for the ninety-one A requests as well, so it's it's a possibility, something the selectmen might think about.
I mean, I I definitely think the the expense is definitely worth worth it for the, you know, people that have to travel, you know, don't live here full time, have to travel an hour and a half to get here. Where the question could have been answered, you know, you know.
Well, I'm sure that the the expense would certainly be less than the highway budget, for example.
Any idea, Tom, excuse me, about about how many of these on an average the planning board gets in a year? So how many, how many do you think it would be?
I just had another thought, which is just, Leanne, has anyone ever asked you to scan an application and just email it to them?
Nope.
But.
Never.
If somebody asked you that question, would you?
I could, yes, I could do it, I have the ability.
What's your phone? What's your phone?
What?
What's your phone?
You're gonna get your first request.
It's it's just a thought.
Right.
I have the ability, yes.
We can scan only to a certain size, obviously a big plant, plant can, and we get certain applications that are small, they're actually designed by homeowners. So they don't have it in that form to begin with, no, survey is not that due, but we can only scan to eleven to seventeen.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
I'm not even a member of the committee, but we're beating, we're starting to beat this.
Not yet. Yeah.
So Bill's already committed to, I think, to go back to the selectmen and maybe go back to what, and the only comment I was gonna make earlier with Matt's. Was I'd rather be talking about how to get it done versus the pitfalls of it, even though the pitfalls, as you described them, are are something to consider. But I'd rather be discussing how we can recognize those and avoid them and move forward, but Bill, Bill's already a couple of times signed up for that, so.
Anyone else yet?
Yeah, so.
You should say your name again, Steve.
Steve Hunter.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus or step on anybody's toes, but the planning board members need to work as a team, as a planning board. It's not Leanne's whole responsibility to send something home or the chairman to get everything put together. The team needs to work together to get all this stuff taken care of throughout the month, throughout the two weeks between meetings, whatever it might be. It's a team effort here, you don't show up and spend your hour and a half at the meeting, you gotta work all month long, if you're gonna be a member of the planning board. And and the cost of these delays, I think this is overshadowed in the whole discussion, the cost of the delay, two weeks, a month, three months. To the applicant could be huge. I experienced that. I mean, it's, it's huge and I think that's the biggest issue is you're here to help the, when the applicant comes through the door, you're here to help him get through the process. Put your arm around him or her and work through it the best way for everybody, not to say no. This, you know, I mean, find find the best way.
Steve, 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 my experience, I was born for the last six years, have we've been very accommodating to the public. In fact, as compared to other towns in this area, I would say even more so than other towns, we've been very, very accommodating. This is the first time in years that I've been here, we've had a mistake such as this happen. We'll try and correct it going forward, as we said, we'll make those, that information available, but we don't usually make mistakes like this, it just doesn't happen. And we are very accommodating to the public on the whole, and we recognize the fact that the property owners here have a right to use their property as they see fit. As long as they follow the rules and the codes, that's what it's all about, we're not here to stop development, am I right, Bill? I think as a planning board, we do work together, we can get assignments, we work on them. I don't know what else more we can do to prevent something like this happen, if I'm gonna call up Leanne and I say, did you do your job this week or what am I gonna tell her?
All right, if there's no other comments, we'll close the public discussion. So the only thing we have, we have a couple things here, we have a pre-application talk uh with Justin Heatherly. And site tax map fifty-five dash two dash eight, uh pre-application discussion, site plan review. So what do you have?
Point of order, you have as part of your meeting.
You haven't, as part of your meeting, voted to actually delay these applications for the rest of us. Are you gonna do that tonight? I wanna make sure that if I leave here, you're not going to discuss these applications that you just said you're postponing, but you as a board have not formally said that in a motion or anything or said that they're postponed to these dates. Shouldn't that be a motion that you accept? You vote on so that we know that you're not discussing them now? And that they are officially postponed?
Okay.
That's what's necessary. We can, I'll make a motion that we're gonna, as per the agenda, we're gonna reschedule these applications. About two for the fourth, three for the fourth of October and one for the eighteenth of October.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
So you haven't done number two yet.
Number two, approval minutes.
Oh, we did, yes, we did, yes, we did.
You would say.
We did that.
Yeah, we did that.
We did that, Steve.
Beginning of the meeting. Applications for the planning board on the desk outside, if anyone would like to join.
Sign-on bonuses. Thank you for your time. I know it's a tough one to do, but thank you very much.
If you come back to Florida, you're gonna be here for eighteen.
I leave on the nineteenth.
Okay.
For Australia.
For Australia.
Australia.
Year and a half coming, but I'm looking forward to it.
You're gonna live in New Zealand too?
Obviously wanted to try and work through this after a year and a half and get it done. And when I just so the board knows, I probably will not own that land as of probably another week from now. But I, Sue and I are the agents and the legal, only, I'm sorry if I'm talking out of turn here, but uh, uh, the legal people, both Mr. Walker and Scott, the attorney for Matt, for my person, not Matt, but Tim. It's been my business. Basically, they're right finishing up the last of it now. And one of the things in the, in the purchase and sales agreement is that I have to resolve this problem because it was approved by the state in May of what we had to do to correct the lot situation and like Jill left, but I mean, that, I don't think that would offend her by what. I'm just saying that we did get approval, but at the same time, now we have to be the agents and I've been required in the legal documents to follow through and make sure that, you know, it comes to an end uh, before, you know, even though he becomes the owner. So it will be coming back as, will be coming back as agents, will be ready, yeah. And I just, so that you don't wonder what, what happened in any time, I'm sure some people already, Matt knows this situation, other people do, so.
How can the names stay in the same?
Uh, it's basically, it's Lanes End Marina, Lanes End Marine Service and Storage LLC as opposed to Lanes End Marina.
I just wondered if it's changed hands of the application, has it just changed the name on the application?
I'm not sure. Sue would, you do, probably, we would have to find out about that, do you know?
I will look at it, just, just.
Yeah, right, right. See, we expected that, uh, this would be the meeting.
I've been prior to it.
And, right, so it's delayed from last year and we had to straighten out the wetland situation. That's all straightened out, done. And I hope, was hopefully this would be before the closing. We wouldn't have to be dealing with, like Matt's saying, to make sure that things are, all the, all the Ts across and all the Is are dotted. But again, thank you and we look forward to seeing you on the eighteen. Thank you now, good night.
Take care, Dave.
Justin.
Yeah, I've, uh, talked to Jack about getting permit for building a thirty by forty, building a property. And he's saying they come to do a site plan review. And which category would I fall under to build this? That's what he's gonna ask.
Right. I couldn't figure out where he fell, so I figured the board could look to see what kind of door you wanna put this under because.
We, is that where, that's, oh, he's up.
It's MDR.
The MDR doesn't say that.
Yes. No.
And you don't own there, right?
Right.
No.
What does he have for?
Storage.
Storage for sand salt.
Yeah.
Couple lean twos on it. Actually use it for equipment and some power and.
Bed and breakfasts?
I just didn't wanna give them the answer that didn't fall under category and come here and get thrown out and come back and get something out, so.
Looks like I stumped everybody.
So, so.
So is it the garage?
So what do you have on the property now, actually?
It'll be, the only thing I can find, only thing I can see with service retail, it's the only thing I can find that would be on there.
I have a house, sir. Well, I know we saw to the public, they don't come up and buy anything. I was told I dropped a sign out front. I have a small lean two. I just want a thirty by forty metal building.
Behind the storage facility.
Behind Steve's, his hate store.
Yeah, yeah, it's the house to the right of it and it goes around hell shape behind.
How do you access it, is it to the right of the store?
So, yeah.
Both both sides.
So when we add a storage buildings?
No.
Cause I know with storage.
Just to store my stuff, no.
It's a garage.
It's a garage.
In a residential law. Running a business out of it.
Sort of. Be a lot easier to go there. That's why.
That's why it was.
We don't want to move back.
No.
So can I be a devil's advocate here and ask the question? Did Kyle Hanson have to do a site plan review of those garage and his?
He lived, he lived there.
Yep.
Right.
He's a contractor.
Yeah. He, he, he built the garage for his cars.
Home occupation.
But did he do all that?
Did he do what?
The home occupation and the site plan review.
No, cause the barn was there a long time ago. That was there before me.
No, I'm not about the garage you built this past year.
Yeah, he's not, this is.
Was Carl, was Carl retired at this point?
He's not retired, but. No, that's a, that's a, that's a garage for his vehicle, it's all his vehicles. His shop is.
Everything in justice is gonna be his, isn't it?
I'm just, no, I'm, I, I'm, I'm asking the question too, cause if it's residential, it's residential. If it's commercial, it's commercial, right.
Home occupation, you would have to live there.
Correct.
Does home occupation specify the rest over there?
I mean.
Should be a definite.
It says home.
I don't.
It does say under home occupation in definitions, it's.
It's been held largely.
Just one. It's not like it's, my business, I keep stuff there, but my office is a wolf bro.
It says where you live.
Everything's won't say it that way, it's just why I might not.
Home occupation does. Another definition of where you live.
It does say that word.
Especially home occupation is the same thing, we can use separate buildings as well as more employees. Up to three or four. Well, it's five to seven or up to three with.
Well, you came in, that's.
You can't, that's the case. They're not there, but what you have, like we need to.
I don't know, tell me, I, I'll do it, tell me.
Home occupation, so this incident of the dwelling unit.
Correct.
So, but does that mean that it doesn't say occupied dwelling?
It says home occupation.
I'm just.
I mean, go to special, read the one that says special occupation. There is the size.
So what do you think, is it, is it retail, Jack?
It's, it's service, I mean, it's not selling, but it's, it says service or.
What, I am service.
Right, service, landscaping, so.
I do sell, but I don't sell a lot of that.
Right.
Service retail, so.
Or people under. Commercial. Consumer services. It's not all of the above, it's one of those in there.
So if you live in a neighborhood business slash commercial zone.
It's a site plan review.
If you lived there, if you lived there and you want, if you lived there and you wanna build a garage.
If you live in a neighborhood business, you live in a neighborhood garage, yeah.
You'd have to do a site plan review?
Yes.
Only if the intent's gonna be commercial. You just wanna have a garage or.
Your cars. Your cars, no, you don't.
It's like, it's like what we talked.
It's what we're doing with Bailey's.
You can build those buildings without any, you know, without any special exception, it's the use.
Correct. It's MDR.
Yeah.
I don't know, I say detail, that's what I said.
Oh, that would be a ZVA thing. That's why it wasn't, um.
ZVA is very useful for them, yeah.
They turned one down here.
Why don't we just do a recap?
They looked the whole picture up, just one.
That's why we just do a recap. The service.
I'm up for whatever, I just, Jack, I wasn't gonna send them with an application under one thing that was wrong and it got changed here, that's why we have these discussions, you know, logic in it.
Which category seeks the opinion? Did you look at that list? Steve, what did I put in?
Well, I came in last week. The service side.
All right, and next one is what?
It's a variance, that's what it's ZVA.
Okay. Is this what, this is not what you're talking about?
Sorry, consumer services.
Yep, okay.
Not including more, modern vehicles, correct.
Okay. All right, so he had to get a variance, he had to go to ZVA.
So what could he do that he didn't have to go to the ZVA?
Build residential garage.
That's like everybody else in town uses, why?
What he does with it, when he wants to go with thirty by forty residential garage, he can build a thirty by forty residential garage. It's a garage, it's the use.
It's the use.
So, so. Did Brian Eila go get a ZVA?
Yes, he did.
No, he did site plan because he lives there.
And he built the garage first.
Maybe he came in for the use of it, where you can correct.
Yeah, he did.
Yep.
And Swiss, Swiss did the same thing. Yeah, Swiss in neighborhood business, but again, did the same thing, built it and then they came. He was doing it for his own equipment there and this stuff's not aware of it.
So is it easier to forgive us? We can't.
We can't, we can't answer that question.
That's for.
Well, in a way, it's all on the dice to build it and then go get the variance later because if you're gonna use it for a business when you build it and the variance is denied, you still, you still have a residential garage. You have your residential garage, right.
So you're saying I can still build it as long as I use it as residential?
If you get.
If they turn me down. So I could go build it and then go to the ZVA like the other people did, trying to get it changed?
That would be your right. You wouldn't be allowed to use it for a commercial use until you had.
You'd apply for the ZVA, but you'd have to start building it now because but still, back to what I said earlier, that the applicant's delay costs a month and you'd like to have it built before winter. So if you.
ZVA will take about two weeks to have the application.
And you gotta schedule another month with these people.
You also, I remember, right, you cannot necessarily need to have the variance before you can do the site plan review. You can do both in conjunction at the same time.
It's a reverse of this.
You can file both applications at the same time. Go, you, you have a site plan review approval, but that doesn't necessarily mean you can do it.
If you contingent on.
Your use is not yet permitted.
The variance.
And you have two serious. And then. So that way you cut your time down.
So I do both at the same time?
More or more.
I don't think the ZVA would turn it down, so I could do it as many times.
Right.
That's what I think, what's the? Well, the butters complain, just look at the, the date for the seminal time.
Right.
Why, you didn't, you didn't time it beat. Yeah, I think, I don't remember, what's the date, Leanne, for this middle for October?
Twenty-two days prior, so eighteen.
Right, so it's. It's next Wednesday, ready Wednesday or something, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's always said that.
Next Wednesday, yeah, it's next Wednesday, so I have to do the application by next Wednesday to hit the October eighteen.
You have all your paperwork, you gotta have that in a week or so ahead or something like, I mean, the, the math.
It's supposed to be as an application.
It's supposed to be part of the application.
Right.
The whole thing together. I think you can file the application and then submit that afterwards. Is that right?
Not supposed to, it's supposed to be as a package. I mean, if you have.
No, it hasn't till the twenty-sixth. Twenty-two days. Three. No, the twenty-two days is twenty-five.
That's one.
It's next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, right, sorry.
Yeah. No efficient mission then.
Hey, Justin, you good? Not making good.
And just have to on the application, you can, you know, we can get you an application.
I can.
To put that section on.
I can get the application now.
Variance.
Okay.
I think I can give it to you now.
Well, actually.
Can you put that under, uh?
Secretary.
Can you put that under a special exception?
No, I didn't. A stor- storage building isn't a service.
Yeah, but it's allowed in any zone. In my check, it's on, probably you can do a special exception, there's no exception.
It's, well, it's wrong.
What do you say calls?
Storage building isn't service though, I don't.
He doesn't get a variance, that way he gets a special exception.
When he gets a garage.
Right, right, but it would be a special exception, not a variance.
Well, it's just whether, you know, the difference is just gonna be. I don't think you're gonna have to.
She has time, it's buying time.
No, it's.
It's all to make the time, just go to ZVA.
It's just. The hardest thing on a variance is the first one, which is the hardship. There has to be something. Is it number five, inherent to the property that makes it so that, you know, you need to do this. I need to put this over here, cause there's wetlands over there, that's what we want to permit, so that's the hardest. So you can eliminate that by a special exception.
Make it easier.
It makes it easier.
You don't think I'll be special.
A special exception gives, doesn't give you the use though, but you.
That's, excuse me, what was the use again?
There was equipment inside.
Equipment inside.
So how is that running a business?
Well, I own a business and I keep some equipment up there. But the business isn't out of there.
Just these persons stuff?
So you can't put a storage building on it? Didn't build a barn on your property even though you didn't live there?
You can build a barn, correct.
It's cause of the use.
But if you don't.
Getting out all the time, equipment, employees. I mean, if it was, if you lived there, it would be a home occupation, no questions asked, or a special occupation, no questions asked. Still a site plan.
So it's like a daily in and out?
Right. Right.
Or is it, it's not an occasional, it's a daily?
No, it's daily, yeah.
It might be good to get the variance over the whole property anyway. To keep it pure business clean and continue to grow. You don't wanna, you don't wanna have problems down the line.
Variance to the business, and then you will need to do something beyond this. Get that captured as well. The part which you're saying, right?
Yeah.
The hardship will be on it. Which is why I thought a special exception for storage.
What's his name, uh, down the street, of course, do you, do you know, that landscaping company?
It's neighborhood business in that.
Oh, it's a neighborhood business?
Yeah.
Me, Jamara.
Yeah, right, right, Jamara, right.
Yeah, that's.
There's other ones that have done it that don't live there, or did at the time when they moved out.
Yeah, I'm not mentioning names in this, but that's, that's very true.
Okay, I'll do an application. You have planning board?
I have the planning board, I don't have ZBA for you.
That's fair for the ZBA's in the morning.
She's not here.
Yeah.
Well, she's a tax, uh, tax clerk, uh, system, so it'll be a little bit.
Tuesday.
My.
Application.
Alright, we have two things on discussion items, so we'll do the budget after, uh, installation operation, my call. You guys. See here? This is the, uh. Discussing what's before.
It's a pretty existing pit, but it hasn't been upgraded since.
Right.
He's looking at grandfather operation.
You have any of that?
Well, it doesn't meet the requirements that we put forward. Based on the intent for, I guess, two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen.
Does anyone suggest we have council?
I mean, he sent the letter, and who knows when the letter was written?
Uh, council, okay, is that what you said?
Does one, some of the suggestion out there, or does that need it?
It just, I can't see, like I said, we went through all this, we got through.
I think we're pretty accommodating to people that who've been right here right along, and then this is something that is. By the ways outside of the framework that we put together.
So he didn't get the letter that, like that guy?
No, because he didn't have an intent for the period, those years that we stayed. That's my opinion, that's just my opinion.
Now, he was given some permission already though, wasn't he, from?
I think the board has something signed an intent estimate.
Issue?
I don't know, I know he.
I don't know whether he has an intent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't.
The last time Mary Pinklin, yeah, she explained all this, and she said by the selectmen signing these intents over the years, was pretty much giving the applicant permission. Permission to estimate, so that's kind of grandfather.
So if he doesn't.
When it, when we did our. Our ordinance, whatever, we just came up with that for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, that was our way of grandfathering, these ones, the ones that were continually active throughout the year, so.
Within their confines.
Correct. And that's what's grandfathered, is what's open, what's been open since two thousand fourteen. Can't go beyond that without, it's still a pit, but you can't work under your envelope outside of that.
The only place opened up are.
Correct. It's a tough one.
Unless you submit plans.
Correct.
Yeah, start from scratch.
Correct, you don't have to go to the whole new pit thing, you just have to submit plans for the expansion. Grandfathered. He's grandfathered what's open.
Go as deep as you want.
To your fore, to your fore feet from on the table.
Of course it is, right? According to merit, you could.
Right, yeah, cause you keep going down.
Standing up.
It was around those.
One issue to consider.
Stuck in some granite.
It was a pit at one time, hadn't been used for a number of years, now he wants to come back and.
Well, it was a lot of things.
But there are other former pits in this town that haven't. Uh, I mean, over behind, where the Durbin house was, there was a pit back there, of course, you know, it's.
Right, that's long and close, well.
So Townes was huge.
Yeah.
Yes, it's huge.
Yeah, it's a huge justice, right.
There's a lot of there.
I mean, there were the sewer lagoons there, that's where DJs hid sewer lagoons, and there was a lot of a few different people.
The town did, the town had sewage lagoons.
Yeah. Well, that's what he done, but yeah, so. And those were closed.
I guess my recommendation would be to have council, okay, cause I don't know enough. We did have that person come in from the state.
Right, I mean, it's just.
It's, it's definitely outside of what we outlined.
Correct.
For, you know, to allow these pits to continue to operate. I mean, on the other hand, what, what other use of that property is there? Where do you draw line?
Unfortunately, you know, the lady from the state, what was her name?
Mary Pinklin.
Yeah. It would be new. And there was some, there was a lot of gray area. It seemed like, you know, that, uh, I think we used up all the gray area we could.
Right, yeah.
So will they motion that?
So is it, where is it going to Roger, or?
They motion to have the attorney look at it?
Whatever, you know, I don't know which ones, Roger, I guess.
Roger, until I get the date of his retirement.
Yeah. Okay.
He's still had town council.
So I guess we also need to start looking for.
So I'm, I'm simply, just to make sure, I'm simply asking Roger to review.
Review that, and based on that, right there.
The. This letter.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Which is the basis of the planning board.
Right.
Okay, and just whether or not his use is re, is the excavation operation is grandfathered.
Correct.
Correct?
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
The other thing I think we might wanna consider if we run into part of these sand pit questions is, cause they're a pretty narrow part of the law. Is we might want to start talking to a sand pit attorney, you know, when we have something like that, which there actually are attorneys who do sand pits. You know, it might be. More position, you say?
Yeah.
Legal lawyers.
Well, we're gonna have to look for another attorney anyhow, right? Leanne?
Yes.
Unless he retired, Roger, I hope you.
I don't know, he's been out of the office, and I'm hoping to talk to him tomorrow. I don't know the date of his retirement.
Is he gonna retire from law, or just retired from the planning shows?
No, retired from the law, he's retiring.
He's only working part-time now.
Yep.
You made a motion?
Yeah, to refer it to Roger for his legal opinion.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Alright.
So just wait, when, when it comes back, whatever he says, that's the basic that we'll look.
Right.
Is that right?
Alright, so next up is the two thousand nineteen budget.
So the budget is on the table.
So, the, for the, for the assistant, you, so this, this budget amount is based on, on so many hours per week, and that's the way that never came up?
Yeah, and, and the pay and the grade. And yes, pay and grade, yes.
So, I guess obviously if we're thinking about doing more.
Didn't we get books?
We did.
Right.
And so that.
Were they free?
Nope.
No, they, they buy them in December. And is that right?
Yeah, it's at the end of the year, so.
So, so, okay, it comes into the year, so we spend this money to buy the books that we get for January, basically.
Yes.
So that's why, you, you never see any money spent out of that line until, sort of, the third period, you know. Alright, uh. So do we know about L R P C dues for next year?
I have not received an updated figure.
So that's another question.
Alright, you wanna start to the top, I mean, I guess, what I'm wondering is if we'd be asking Leanne to do, or Leanne or whoever.
Yeah, or whoever.
To do, to do more, to do more work, so more hours involved.
I don't have time.
Does that need to be increased?
If I can weigh in, I, I don't think it needs to be increased personally. I mean, if this board is gonna continue to put more responsibility on this position. If the reality is that I don't have the time, um, to do this, I haven't had the time for the past year. I've only committed to staying on board the planning board to see through the master plan process, because I didn't feel right leaving the town in that predicament. So I wouldn't recommend increasing not knowing what the future holds, and if. That's just my opinion. I would leave it at that, however, at the two, uh, two twenty-seven, two twenty-eight, cola, and there could be a merit increase depending on. So, but that should be changed internally, I would think, once that was approved by the board or something as well. But the baseline of the, the line item, I would.
And the supplies, leave it at five hundred or?
I would leave it at five hundred.
Cost of postage or?
Um, I mean, we're not over expending postage. And we're only at fifty-seven percent.
The thing is, it's an in and out of a lot of this stuff, so you still have to have it upfront.
Yeah, the postage, we received postage from.
No. Correct.
You know, the applicants, so that's an in-out, so the surplus or the revenue.
Right.
Is reflected in a different budget, it's not even a budget, it's in the general fund, so.
Correct.
Doesn't matter whether we collect it or not, we have a, have to authorize it with this staff, because what comes back in goes in the general fund, so.
We have to leave the money.
Right.
Yeah, and based on the number of applications we've received, I mean, until we see an increase in applications, I wouldn't move that figure either.
Right.
I mean, if we start getting more and more, then next year's budget might reflect an increase, but I wouldn't increase it based on this year's.
Right. And right now, we have a surplus of thirty-one hundred to roll over.
Just, yeah, we're only fifty-seven point three expended, and we're at the end of September, so that's.
But we're only, right. Right, it's three quarters.
That's reasonable.
Right.
Well, this is as, as of the end of August nine-five.
Yeah, you know, it's.
Oh, right.
We're, 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 we're.
Right.
We're not, just.
Two thirds of the way through the year, and we're three quarters of the way through the budget, but it's not, not typically isn't level every month, anything.
Right.
So I'm just gonna let the selectmen do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll call L R P C and get an update, see if they're gonna increase our dues, but outside of that, and I can report, um, or, I'm not sure when. The board of selectmen need this budget, but if they need it, then I would recommend the board taking a vote tonight on the, um. Level funding, the two, you know, the two thousand nineteen budget.
We, we don't need it immediately, so.
If they can wait till October fourth, then we will have those dues.
Sure.
Yep.
For sure by that.
Well, that makes sense, they have the.
Okay. And I'll have, um.
Informational, yeah.
Okay.
Has the town began searching for somebody to replace Leanne?
No, because I haven't given my formal. That's why.
It's, I think something to be aware of is that people with their knowledge, there's probably less than the handful in town. There, they're in surrounding towns, where that's not gonna be a particularly, it's quite an easy one.
Right.
That's not a standard deposition.
No.
No. I'm not encouraging them, right, sure.
Do you have anybody we recommend, Leanne, that comes to mind?
Um, I, I don't. But, I mean.
There's unless you're planning with secretary of labor or anything.
I guess we'll prove.
I guess you could keep prolonging the master plan and not stick around. Which looks like it's gonna happen again, so.
Alright, so we're gonna wait until the fourth then, to make it?
Right, so we get the L R P C, and I, I'm just letting them do work on my one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the system, yeah.
Okay, that's it?
What about, uh, so many changes for twenty nineteen fourth?
Oh, so.
So not this time, just maybe changes to put on the fourth?
Right, I don't. I don't have any proposals.
Well, you know. You know, and my tweak is just the camping one, I'm not.
I'm, now is the time to start working on it, rather than in December, so.
That's the only one I can think of.
Okay. So.
The, the one we were doing last year?
That was the camp, just number of sites and.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 you got the campers and all those restaurants and that, so.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
Good.
Um, when are we going to discuss changes, administrative changes? Just curious about what happened. Oh, like, uh, what is the jobs, what, what is the board's, um, you know, pleasure, do they want me to upload applications to the website? We're, we're gonna need to discuss this, I don't know if you wanna discuss it October fourth and think about it, or if you wanna.
Let's say we're on, I'll put it on the agenda for the fourth.
But I would like some direction as to how to move forward to try to, um, find a common ground between the residents and.
Yep, can you, with these applicants that come back in, can you ask these applicants if they have their information? Which one, just curious.
Yeah, with Jim Ryan's and Norway Plains, well.
I mean, I'm. Big one, yeah.
Yeah, and this can be part of the bigger discussion, my, my concern as far as requiring an applicant to submit something via PDF is going to be those people like Tom Swift.
Correct.
Um, who else recently, uh, grow, you know, people like that, that.
They've been there, so.
Small, you know, people that are just off.
You have the capability here, though, scanning and.
We can only scan eleven by seventeen, as big as we can scan.
Actually, really, all everywhere.
Seven by?
Eleven by seventeen.
Eleven by seventeen.
So, again, it's just discussion item, we need to address it.
I, I think the immediate thing that needs to be resolved is, the applications that we have, is making them available, who has them tomorrow? You know, for these people to come in, um, so is, is it as simple as. You know, you're, the applications sit on your desk right now?
Yes.
And I imagine they have.
Any application that is coming before the board in that twenty-two days is always on my desk, I don't file it, it's on my desk. We just need to inform the other staff in this office.
Right, I was gonna suggest, you know, I think the first line people come up to is usually going to be Heather and, um.
And Karen.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, just let, hey, this is where it is, it's centered here, such and so forth, and then perhaps a sign on the wall saying. Planning, planning board applications are available.
Right.
And also, those people are not gonna be able to answer any questions, depending what is may happen.
Whether, yeah, and they're not gonna be, and if they look at it on the website, they're not gonna be able to ask questions, so.
They're not required not to answer that question.
That's correct.
Right.
There's, there's gonna be pros and cons to every single thing, I just would like a discussion about it, and a direction.
Right. Yeah, I guess my, I'm definitely for the scanning of, of the applications from the website, I guess my, my concern would be, obviously, the, the entire application.
Yeah.
In the entirety cannot be.
in the entirety cannot be scanned, I mean, the big, the main.
You can't scan it, but it can be sent to us.
As a PDF.
As a PDF, so it can be downloaded.
Okay.
So we just can't download what comes in as a paper form, other than the.
Is it on your, right. I guess my concern is, is if things that we can't, you know, she can't scan, and then, so now you have an incomplete application online. You know what I mean, rather than, you know, I think, you know, it has to be, I don't, I don't know if you can put.
Well, you can just say the application is online, not the whole package.
I was gonna say.
You know, because we have photo documents for one project, that's probably fifty pages.
Right. Well, I mean, there's, the issue is, somebody having the time to double things and stuff. And I don't, I, I don't know how much spare time Leanne has or that. I mean, that, this.
Yeah, and it's not just gonna be me, it's gonna be the next person, and the next person, and.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's nice to wave the magic finger, my dad has one, and how he uses it and stuff, and stuff. Right. I'm sorry, I have one. You know. The application itself is normally, how many, it's only a few pages, right?
The application itself is only one page, so.
So I think, you, you, for, like, this is a busy meeting here, and we had, we had four. You know, so that'd only take ninety-five minutes to do the busy application.
It's not, right, so basically, if you're going to, if that's what you're looking for, then you need to make it clear, and I will put it in the minutes very clear, that it's only the application that gets uploaded, not the supporting documentation for the application.
Right. Correct, I think it is.
Which includes the plans, test pits, typography.
Right.
Mm-hmm. A butter, authorization of agents, that's what all that stuff is.
Right, and then, and then it also has to be, when you, if uploaded, say, for complete application, please go to town hall during business hours, see the complete application. They'll cover us from, from posting something that's not complete, then. You have to, 'cause the next issue is the legal implication, if something doesn't get posted to the website correctly, you know, a part of it is missing, or. Right, so you have to have disclosure in there, that this is not the complete application, but disclosure. You know, what, and, and it needs to have.
Well, and, and then, I, I can see, if I'm gonna play devil's advocate, I mean, it's, I'm gonna see a potential issue is, when are these getting uploaded? Do we have a date, how many days prior? People are gonna say it wasn't on the website, and why wasn't it, and, it's just hard, I mean, I see both sides, but.
I feel like, and I said this right from the start, we're gonna set ourselves up for failure, but. I think it's a great idea, I mean, I love that.
It is a good idea.
Why?
Can I offer something, it's since I'm the one in this position right now, doing this job? We heard from a butters, primarily, I don't think anybody in here that spoke was not an abutter who did not receive a notice. So everybody in here, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, had an issue, um, but was it, was an abutter that received the notice. The application is one page, it is far less time consuming, in my opinion. Um, and very easy to simply make a copy of that one page and put it in with the abutter notice. That's what I find.
That sounds good. Yeah, that's a valid.
It, it's not online, which I know is a request, and I think we still should consider it, but I just don't think.
I think that's a good, a good idea.
I think it's a start.
For the immediate future, yeah.
And answers that question, what's it all about?
And make sure that, that folks that are here at the town offices can put their finger on the back, and give some.
And then if we. Yeah.
Is it gonna be done like the Thursday after the Wednesday, or?
See, if it's in with the abutter notice, they receive it, it's the ten day statutory requirement, we meet everything, we meet, plus they get, plus we're satisfying the request from the public, that they want more information on it. I mean, I'll be honest with you, the application is still skimpy, it doesn't provide a lot more information, but it provides for.
Well, it tells them what they're gonna do.
A little bit more, not much, but a little bit.
Well, it's a back. I think that's a good idea.
But that's what they're asking for tonight, mm-hmm.
Mister Chairman, can I say something?
Sure.
I think that you can put the application in with the notice, like Leanne is suggesting, but I think if you're gonna go further than that, you need to rewrite your regs to explain what you're doing, you know, if, if you're gonna do the PDF stuff, fine, you can have Leanne scan whatever she can scan, and it's gonna be incomplete.
Right, right.
You, you wanna write it up and get the applicant to submit a package in paper and a package in PDF, so that it's a one-click to be uploaded, and it's the applicant's responsibility, whether it's complete or not, not the office staff.
Right.
And it's, it's three, ten seconds worth of work.
Right.
To upload it, and that needs to be in the regs.
Correct.
You can't just.
Do you want to submit, or what needs to be submitted?
Yeah.
I, I think that would work great, for, you know, whether Toy Mountain Survey or these guys, all of them we're gonna run into is when we have someone like Justin, or someone, sorry, someone like Steve.
You could go to mailboxes, and they take the whole package, they scan it, and they put it on the zip drive.
I, I, I think it's just gonna add something to it that's gonna make it, so it's gonna overwhelm them.
So it's easy.
Yeah.
With it, I mean, they're just.
Might be confusing to them.
No, I mean, you do need to consider the burden that it places on the applicant, I mean, we've heard many times Steve saying, it's a burden, it's a burden, it's a burden. You know, increase regs, increase, so, again, it's just a topic of discussion, I'm not saying yea or nay, I will do whatever I'm told to do, it's my job. I'm just saying that if we want to, um, meet the requests of the abutters who were present, that would address it, going into the abutter notices.
I would, I would start.
Start with the letter, of course.
Yeah.
Start with the S.
Yeah.
I would start with the letter S, then if you need more information, they can come in and look at the file. And that's why I would put a notice in that envelope saying the same thing.
I, I will say that, you know, at, at work, we scan everything, I mean, every invoice, everything is scanned, and we don't keep anything. And I think it's a great idea, when we do that, which at some point, I mean, that's the way everything's going. There's no question about, we should scan every application, you know, everything, it should be on, I'm sure you guys have a server here, backups and all of that stuff. And then, once you have that data, at some point, it would be nice, it can go online, and you can pull up all the applications, and you can pull up those things. But like we have Sue mentioned, they did the regs are gonna have to be changed, and we have to have procedures in place, as well. And we have to make sure, whatever we do, when we go in that direction, it's done.
I think we should have a timeframe, and say, like, if, within six months, it should be done.
Well, that's changing the regs, so that should be done.
And that's why I think we need to discuss this further at a work session, I, I didn't mean to like have all the answers tonight, I don't think that we should just get rid of the whole online idea, I think we need to further explore it, um, but I think that there's a hard reality of a burden to not only staff,
I think we need that.
but a burden to the applicant, requiring certain things, um, in digital format, so, but again, discussion at a work session. But we can start with at least, if it's agreement right now, to start moving forward from this point, including in the new abutter notice.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can make further changes at a future work session.
Do we need a motion for that, or just administrative thing?
No, it's just, I don't believe we need a motion, it's just administrative.
Yeah, just administrative. In that envelope, you know, then if there's more information, maybe you could review the file at the town offices.
It's, I'm gonna have to revise the abutter notice, and that's another thing that we need to discuss, is, I find that the abutter notice is very wordy,
It's, okay. It's on the abutter.
and has stuff in it that's very confusing, like that first, um, the woman, I think Jill, I'm not sure, said, about the agriculture.
Yeah, co-see that.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be in it, by statute, we only are required to notify the abutters of certain things, just include it, be simple. It's way too wordy, and it has things.
And it can be more plain, which, if it happens to be a certain, certain language.
Particularly in language, just they have to be a certain, certain language.
No, no language, we just, just no language, no, that's why, and I can present that stuff at the next workshop, work session. Well, I would recommend the eighteenth of Oc- October, because our work session should be in two weeks, but we have three applications. And then we'll be doing the budget, and we might need to address the L R P C contract, so maybe at the October eighteenth meeting, we can have a much broader conversation.
Okay, we have anything else?
I think we voted. Yeah, make the motion, we're here.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.